The June 20 meeting of the County Act and Planning Board took order. First thing we are going to do is designate our alternate for tonight. Since we have to have a formal five, okay, one, two, three, four. Donovan, you'll be voting tonight. Dennis, you'll be not voting, but in the discussion. Before we go any further, I know our last meeting, you guys were in kind of a pickle with both Tom Cashin and I.
Absent.
That's the word, absent.
And Yoli too.
And Yoli too, yeah. And my apologies, but I will say this, that sometimes family business comes before town business. And that's the way it's always gonna be. And if any of you have worked on a board, you know yourself, sometimes it breaks your heart, but that's the way it goes. So now we'll carry on. Approval of the minutes of May 16th and June 6th. You all read them? Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 16th.
Second, I'm Yoli. All in favor?
Aye.
To entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 6th.
We'll wait on that.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Sort of tying into what happened at the last meeting, so we do not find ourselves in a pickle again, I would like to entertain a motion to appoint an interim chair, vice chair, an interim vice chair. And I am open to a motion. You know who's on the board, you know who's on first, so we'll hear a motion to appoint an interim vice chair.
Can I be an alternate?
I'm not an alternate.
No.
No, no.
I can put it out there.
Can't be sitting next to Joyce.
I'd be willing to be the vice chair if someone would nominate me.
And if it's not out of order, I would also...
I would like to nominate Gavin.
I would second that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Gavin, you will now serve as interim vice chair.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sounds fine.
And thank you for taking that on. Okay, old business, first on our agenda is, this hotel property is pro line here? Nope, we shall go on. Second, we have Mr. Boise, who's in for a site plan review and some signatures, Mr. Boise? All nine yards. Richard Whitman, you're here. I was not here in person, so I want to leave things for you to tell me if you have anything you want to add, and then the board will have their discussions.
I don't think so. If you come forward, just kind of figure it out. Just give me a little more. Yeah. I don't think so.
Sorry, nervous. Don't be nervous.
Put on everybody.
Put on everybody. Well, that's a different story. So who's here, the public hearing that will take the lead, please?
Well, I was here at the public hearing.
All right.
Let's grab those minutes.
Yep.
Go through the minutes.
What I read, a lot of people like you. I liked you, said some very nice things about you. And it's a very nice thing about when people support you and stuff. Very nice.
Leslie and Dennis were also here. We didn't really say anything, it was just a public hearing. Seems like we have most of the information we need to, or all the information we need to approve this conditional use permit. I'm sure there'll be some discussion about the driveway. We didn't really come to a conclusion, of course. I think the other issues are pretty small, Ken will take care of them. This is the hand railing, I don't think that's really anything we need to discuss tonight.
Right, right, great.
I mean, I would move, start going through the standards, but if anybody wants to converse about the subject before we start going through the conditions, I think that would be fine.
Yeah. Okay, so that's what we have to discuss.
There's two things concerned that your buddies had. One was the speed of the traffic that was down through there, I think there's a few people spoke about that. And they would like to see that addressed, that's what a few people publicly have asked for. And the other thing is, the other about was concerned with the playground, I guess you'd call it, with the kids would be playing, you know, behind the house.
With your daycare playground, there's some...
Yes, that's what I mean. That there was a fence put up there. He said there was a bank in there, kind of steep, that went down to his property, he was concerned about. The kids were out there playing, falling down and getting hurt on his property. Those are the only two things that I remember from the public hearing that people were concerned about.
Well, I think the first issue there about the signage, I think that we can just make a condition that applicants contact DOT and request that, well, like Richard asked, the 25 mile per hour sign, one needs to be straightened if maybe a guy hit by something, or one is in a visible occasion.
Yeah, there's a bunch of trees.
Right here?
Yeah. There's a blue lark right there.
Yeah. I think you should just move it forward, no, no.
Well, yeah, if anything, no one knows what the speed limit is here. So, you know, if it's unmarked, 35, 40.
35 by state, isn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think so too.
So you get all the here, and you can even see that speed limit pulling out of French Street.
Right.
There's a bunch of lilacs right there that are blocking it.
But you've got clear vision coming out of Milton Mills, and you've got clear vision.
Not to see that sign.
No, I'm just worried about a car coming out of your driveway. It's coming down the hill where they've got the speed built up, and then you can't see around this corner, and you can't really, you have visual, a couple hundred feet tops.
Say you're pulling out of our driveway, then this spot here, I took pictures, and all you have for view here is a tree, 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 and all the way out of our driveway. Even with the growth on the trees, I can see a car pretty able to hear it. I mean, that's, you can stop.
Looking into that more, if you want to say, for pulling out of our driveway, as Chris and I did look into, you know, pulling out of that one, and your concerns on that, that is so dangerous if there's drop off. And from that, from that side of the driveway, even if like in the winter time, pregnant mom going down that slope of the hill, walking down, even if we meet a pathway, that's just dangerous.
And then there, a snowbank right there, from the speed belt back and stuff like that, this, they can turn around in there. I mean, I've done it. My truck's not gonna be there.
As far as the signage, just be willing to contact DOT when...
Yeah, I've actually, I've asked, I've talked to Mary and Joe, the internal board, and he was gonna contact DOT, but I can call him too.
Yeah, it might be more effective for you to do it, honestly, I'm not really sure, but maybe you would suggest that they would also put up some other, another sign that says daycare facility, or...
Slow children.
Children, where children's zone or something.
We have kids that now...
Well, something, something...
Something on kids.
It slows down down, French Street coming up, and they're playing, riding their bikes right there, and cars are actually slowing down because they're getting hit, or, you know.
Well, a lot happens in the summer, there's kids jumping off the bridge too, and they're supposed to slow down. I mean, it is an active area, and if you'd be willing to contact DOT, that'd be great.
But just for the sake of the school, I'm very glad to, the school, the daycare, I'm very glad to hear that you did look at it both ways. We had asked you, you know, to just double check that, and maybe ask your other neighbor if he turned back the speed there, and, you know, so it's a little clearer there.
I can email the pictures from that driveway compared to our driveway.
But the other driveway doesn't affect us, though. It's all keeping the kids safe.
They do have, and I believe, I've seen them, is the state has, well, kind of like the same thing that we've got down there now, with the safety, going too fast and slow down, or whatever.
Radar speed, that's why it's...
Yeah. Just beyond that Vanessa's now.
I mean, you could request the state to put a permanent one.
I put it on my agenda for all those things when the state does come out, because I also can ask the state those questions as well, so I'm getting things from them. If there's anything, I mean, I dealt with the state before, two daycares, and I'm in a different state, but it's still like, any questions that you have for them, or anything that you want them to go forth doing for them, for the kids, and the state, if the case, they're gonna, you know, help me on that.
Oh, that's true.
So I have that with like signs, and, you know, all those questions when they do come out, and go ahead, talk to me.
That's good.
I don't think DOT would install that sign at their cost, though.
No, not at their cost.
That would be in the gas's cost.
I don't know anything about that, so I would take your word at it.
Couple of speed bumps would be nice.
Well, I was thinking maybe we could ask them to step the speed limit down, so instead of going from 40 to 25, and went from 40 to 30 to 20 once you get down toward French Street and everything.
Take it all the way through the intersection.
Step it down further up the road, almost like...
Move the 40 back up the hill, a couple hundred feet, and then we get a bit of 30 in there, and move down to 40.
For the first time, like in my life, with these kids coming up to visit my oldest daughter, like I hear what Joan asks and them are saying, complaining about for so many years, like they really want to push for that. And the other day, I had kids visiting my older daughter, and they, they either slow down or don't, and, you know, it could be, so that's something that I would love to push for, to get signs, regardless of daycare, not just for the kids in the area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's been a problem there for many years. People, I mean, you heard that at the public hearing last time, people were complaining quite a bit about the speed. There's even a comment about a police officer from another town that was going 45 down to there.
Good.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, going coming down the hill, people just blow it off.
I think we can move this number section on.
So I think that's good, if you guys agree.
Don't try to go too quick.
But that way, in the conditions, that you have to contact DOT and get signage, and that'll be at your expense, unless DOT covers it for you, that's up to you, or whatever.
Well, you know, Chris said they changed the speed limit, right, on 109 down by the trading post?
That's what I'm thinking of it.
And, well, now that you're saying that, I'm thinking of that, it's gone from 50 to...
There it goes, 35, and by the trading post now, it's 40. It's quirky too.
It's kind of quirky, but it steps down, so that, it's not, you know, a huge driveway it's not at all like going in and out of the trading post, but the speed limit change is a good thing.
Yeah, I think we're going following it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, with regular signs, you don't have as much compliance. The radar speed limits, similar to the trail that's out there, is, I think, almost 92%. When people see that, they slow down. And again, I think coming out of Milton Mills and French Street, I don't think that's an issue, because you're just starting out, as far as the speed, it's coming down the hill, you've built the speed up, and your visibility is poor.
I mean, from looking down from the end of the driveway, like you said before, you can see all the way down over West and Avenue, and...
Yes, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, looking down this way isn't an issue. The speed's slow across that single lane bridge, and out here, they're starting from zero, so it's just coming down the hill.
I think you have a very good idea of what you want to do, and, you know...
It's been a problem my whole life, the speed limit's not bringing out of French Street any mobility, so...
Well, I heard you get that.
Yeah. I don't crap in my own backyard.
I'll talk to your mom, probably. But I do think, you know, as well as, you said you're probably, yeah, make a phone call on your own, it's only a suggestion, make a phone call on your own.
Probably everybody in that area would call.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you're doing the, and you and I both know that what you do for the state is probably, is there, you know, so you're doing that, so you can push a lot of buttons with that, you know that. So that's good, that's good. Any other specific things that we, I mean, we simply had, we pretty much had the two basic things with the driveway being the biggest thing.
Were you still thinking four kids bags?
Yeah, yeah, and alternate, no more than that throughout the whole day. How was...
Four kids at any given time? So you could have four come every hour, as long as...
Which one, my son is, he's included in that four, so three would be now, but one in, I've got a different kid, because my son is, he's just this age, because of his age, yeah. But once he's four, and it's still, I can also alternate throughout the whole day, what people are looking for in this town, too, four, you know, during the day, and then four for school, two of ones.
So four at any given time, excluding your kids? So if you, if you go more than that, then you come back to amend the conditional use. With the four, I'm okay with the septic currently, if we increase that, then we'd have to look at the septic.
Yeah, it's gonna be me for a couple of years, probably, myself.
Yeah.
The, but it, it's...
Four, well, really just three.
Three.
It's three, it's not four, it's...
I kept going to Florida, so she wouldn't come back if she picks up an extra kid, and the kid all of a sudden becomes old enough.
Oh, so your son's turning four relatively quickly, so it's...
Well, yeah.
Yes.
So, that's what I'm gonna say, four.
So we leave it at four?
Yeah.
Excluding her own.
Well, we leave it at four, excluding your own, leave it that way, you know, just do that.
Were you already writing a letter saying the septic would go out?
No, I'm thinking, she has four kids, most of them are in diapers anyways, so I think the septic load would be minimal. If you've got more, then that's gonna change when we look at it at that point. That'll give her a chance to get established, and then make a decision if she wants to expand, or, but. Hours of operation?
Six thirty to five thirty every day.
Seven days a week?
No, until Monday to Friday.
No Saturdays?
No Saturdays.
No weekends?
No weekends.
Do you have any parents who work on the weekend?
I mean, I have, I do that for my family time, I need my weekend.
Okay, it's your choice.
So it's Monday to Friday.
Just don't like scoop yourself out of something, who might use it.
There's not a conditional, right?
It's gonna be...
No, no, we're not at them, actually.
No, we're getting there, though.
We're getting there.
It will be a condition.
Yeah, yeah, we're not there yet.
Out in the backyard, are we, you concerned about the fence situation that's needed?
Yes, we talked for...
You gonna put up a roof of a fence, is it great?
I'm happy over here.
We're actually looking into some right now, well...
Where's the old metal fence my grandpa's put up? It's like right there, see the stand, the stone wall?
Oh, that's the spot I was concerned with?
Yeah, there's a old metal fence there, I can replace that with something, you know...
Health and Human Services is probably gonna want a fenced-in general area with soft landing, and hide that trampoline.
Well, it's working at low, we haven't installed it.
Yeah, keep standing.
Stay, keep standing, okay.
The state's gonna require a four-foot fenced-in area.
Yeah, that's their requirement.
With a gate.
Yeah, it has to have a gate, but that's from the state, the state, you've got that paperwork, you know that?
We'll just get a copy of the license before you open.
Before you open, just give us, and we'll put that with your conditional use permit, a copy, a final copy of your permits from the state. You know, and that should be before you officially open. Do you think we're ready to go over this list? Yeah. The list I gave you? Again, I'm gonna go to you, since it wasn't yet for the last one.
Enjoying your reading, I'll probably...
Well, Don, Don will read them, but you take the lead, please.
Starting with A, the use will not have an adverse impact on spawning around fish, aquatic life, bird, or other wild aquatic habitat.
Some of these you'll laugh at, but everybody gets, don't ruin them.
The use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
A.
And A. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yes. Yes. Can you state why, because that's the findings of that? That is the findings of that, and how many? Yeah. Do you want to know it?
Yeah, I gotta talk to you.
Yeah, I gotta talk to you.
I'm just looking for, it's a reliance, the comprehensive plan.
Right. Under the business section, because it's a daycare or not?
I think just shop, or just walk.
Yeah, I think that, the comprehensive plan encourages small businesses, we could put that down. It's a yes, and that is the reason why it's a yes. You see, they have the, the way there's, not a period, not a...
Okay.
Yeah.
Ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance.
Are we gonna say yes, but with the condition that you must call DOT if they're suspended to have them put signage indicating that your daycare facility is present? I would suggest from both directions, and that you address the speed limit, perhaps suggest stepping it down as people are coming down the hill from 40 to 30 to 20, as opposed to jumping from 40 to 25.
I would really like Gavin to see that flashing speed sign as a condition. And if the DOT, for example, says no to any of these, you know, we'll put in this condition.
Just come back.
Then, well, if, give Ken a letter from the state saying, no, we don't do that, or we won't do that, or, because, I mean, it's a state road, it's not, it's nothing to do with the town bank, or DOT, that's what it's all about.
So you just get a letter from them saying, nope, one of them do it, just bring it back to us, and then you're covered, and, you know, we all try our best to do the right thing. I will tell you this, from personal experience, it takes a very long time for them to do. I'll do it, you know, we'll step down the speed limit, and, eleven months for it to happen, so you can't lose patience, or think something is a rod when it isn't, when it isn't, because it just, like in here, the state moves real slow, so just keep that in mind. Okay, we're on to...
No, we need to vote on that, I think, because we, we just asked them to do three thoughts, three different things with signage, and I would at least suggest that the flashing sign only be present in the summertime, because I'm not sure DOT will actually have that thing in the snowbank.
That's right.
So permanently, it's a sign.
So you're, so you're, so we're not asking for what's there now to be present each summer, we're asking for a permanent automated sign.
The other sign that's really great, just like the way it's already blown up there.
Usually, usually it's solar, the easy ones were solar, and that, that happened a lot...
Okay.
That was the one I was saying, coming down the hill, because it's not an inexpensive sign, I don't see the reason to make them pay for one coming from the Milton Mills side, because that's...
The flashing one, sure, sure.
Yeah. So flashing light sign, I was about that, and then what was the other one? It was the speed limit to stepping down, moving the speed limit?
That's just my suggestion.
I'd keep the suggestion out of a condition, though. I mean, it makes sense, but you need to do a traffic study, and stuff like, let DOT worry about that.
Okay, so maybe we'll just say, call DOT and address signage as a condition, as opposed to being so specific about what we end up with.
I thought, I thought the radar speed control sign was simple and easy, the rest of it is enforceable, really. It's a good suggestion that they call DOT and tell them there's a problem in front of their house. Obviously, the sheriff's department must think so, because you got the trailer in front of your house, this radar control.
Right, right, right.
DOT is also doing the traffic studies this year. So DOT will be in here. The last time they were done, I think, was 2017. They do maybe two years. Yeah, and the traffic count for all of Milton Mills, they, you know, start to finish, was about 3,200 cars a day, going, you know, back and forth, and, which seems very, I mean, there's, anybody can look it up online, that that was, and that was two years old. So I think the state's really aware that it's a busy road in that way. But I think if you call DOT, as we've been saying, and do that, that's what you can do, we can't go and chase cars, we're not the police department, or the sheriff's department, any of that, just to, you know, get the, get, if we can get a permanent flashing sign, I say we mean, meaning your community, you know, to do that, that would be great.
Be a win for everybody.
Be a win for everybody.
Is it a condition that they give us?
We can't put that on them at all, because we can, it can be a condition that you ask for it, if you get it, three cheers for everybody, if you don't get it, the only thing we would like is your letter of refusal from them. And that goes, you know, goes with your, you did due diligence, correct? They did due diligence.
None of it all matters unless there's an incident.
Yeah, unless there's an incident, exactly.
Okay.
And, you know, what, I hit your car, you hit my car, we're talking about a couple thousand dollars, maybe. We're not talking about cars, with this kind of business, we're talking about kids and moms and that, so. I think, you know, we, okay, I would do?
Yeah, I'm just trying to noodle out exactly what we were conditioning. Yeah, I'm just trying to noodle out exactly what we were conditioning there.
Radar speed coming from the downhill side, radar speed sign, or a lot from DOT saying they can't.
How about a regular sign on the Milton Mills side, just saying it's a daycare?
All right, so say this again.
But yeah, I'm not specifically about the perfect one, it's just.
That's a perfect thing.
Something to let people know on this end, down there, so, we've been trying to do this with our tribe, did a question, just to more of the street, now there's lots coming out of my street.
Now, I said the track and trail is going in French Street too, right?
Yeah, I know. Don't have many bridges left.
No.
It's funny, they're gonna cause an accident, that's gonna make an accident, trail trucks going out of that, going up there.
Yeah, on another bridge. Are we throwing beef or?
Yeah.
Cranking it right up, cranking.
You only like sweating, man.
Your mission. It takes a lot of energy to air conditioning the outside. Um, okay, Donovan, are you all set with the?
Next one.
Okay.
The second sign is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations.
Yep.
Yeah.
Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made.
Transportation?
Yep.
Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made.
Not really applicable.
A stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five-year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed. Adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. There is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
Yeah, they're well.
Yeah.
Yes.
The provision for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, and the like.
I don't think your kids are in that range, ain't that anybody?
I remember the neighbor saying she loved the sound of kids screaming.
She loved the sound of kids screaming.
So I remember that.
Maybe we all find out what you know to make the kids scream.
Yeah, I think we should put the fencing as a condition under this provision, because it does provide adequate protection to the neighbors.
Is that one?
Yeah, so the area that was brought up, um, that you.
Just where you showed.
You replaced that with the adequate fences of the code that keep a kid from going that way.
Is that irrelevant?
The state.
To the point where, I mean, if you're gonna have a play yard, like you're talking about, out back, the state requires you to be all fenced in anyway, so.
With a gate, with a gate.
Right, with a gate, you could almost go across, per se, right there, and use that square area, little play area, instead of the fence, we spend money there, spend it there, per se, and that's what it gives, I'm gonna write in there, so they just have to kind of, I don't know, put them on.
Either way, Steve still wants that, even with our kids, so, we still want it, so.
Are you, Dennis, are you suggesting we ask them to, we put as a condition, they fence the whole backyard, or that we don't worry about the fencing?
I would say we don't worry about it.
We don't worry about it.
The state's required, we're.
We don't worry about it.
I just don't want a document that we address this.
Well.
That's what I was thinking, it is detrimental.
We can just put fencing under K, and that, you know, fences stop noise and screaming and.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yes, I mean, that's pretty innocuous.
I wrote with fencing per state rules.
Good job.
Good, that's why you're doing this. That wasn't with both guys, right? Perfect, okay.
All performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
Yes.
The last one, archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
You haven't found any historic resources in several areas.
Little bottles.
How old's the house?
Eighteen thirty-nine. Or a bottle, but actually, it's a quality door, a back, or something.
Why would it, the house would be a close historical resource, basically, cause it's kind of like a historic village district down there, um, not that we have that dedicated necessarily, but, um, that's good, that looks good.
That looks good. So with all this being said, Bridget, you had said we wanted to talk about something else before, I think that just happened, covered already in this?
I do.
Yeah, if it hasn't, that's, then, um, we're good, um, so I would say, if everybody is right there, that we'll take a vote, it would be to, uh, accept the application to conditional use, or conditional use with conditions, and then motion please.
Do I clarify the conditions, we're going through the standards?
They should be part of the motion. Oh, they should be part of the motion, yes, so Donovan, your answer, you.
The conditions I have, signage, contact DOT at all costs, a four-child limit, and fencing, with fencing per state rules.
Hours of operation, six-thirty to five-thirty, Monday through Friday.
And copy of the license.
Prior operation.
Prior operation.
And I think just clarify the sign, what we were talking about anyways.
The sign, can you do it yourself?
No, the radar speed control sign.
Bridget, are you putting up?
Just a sign doesn't say, does he be anywhere? Just a sign doesn't. For some reason, I felt like in the beginning, when I was talking to Brenda, I first came to your office about, she asked about the sign, it can't be like a big sign type thing, what are we talking, yeah, it would probably be something small, maybe even a little flag that I have, I mean, it's a very small fan.
The reason I'm thinking about it, you know, sometimes subliminal, um, messages get to people more than flashing lights do, you know, like, oh, that's where the daycare is, so.
Right.
Oh, wasn't sure if it was allowed, a big sign or not, is that allowed to?
I mean.
Up to, up to four by eight feet, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think you would, you know, I think you would want something fitting of a way to wear it.
No, I think that's an excellent idea, a lot of people knows the daycare.
You know, but, you know, sometimes the subliminal, rather than the in-your-face screaming sign, does, you know, you don't even realize that you're lifting your foot off the ass, and your little squirrely bee thing, it's a very cute little logo, it really is, I particularly like it, it's much easier to survive.
Is he, is it, excuse me, sometimes, maybe all the time, I don't know, um, I know when we're looking at some other places, um, it was required under conditions that you had a report from the fire marshal.
The state handles that.
But.
Some that we part of the paperwork that we probably get.
She won't, an applicant will not get a license to do whatever, particularly after childcare, and that's any kind of childcare, to do, unless they pass the certain things required by the state, sometimes it can be a small thing that can be corrected, but sometimes it has to start from A and go all the way back down through Z. I think, Bridget, you've had experience, not every state is the same, some states are lax, some states are really strict, but you know what, how the state works that way, and you know, so I have more faith that somebody who's experienced in it would make sure that all those Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, having, you know, someone green doing it.
No, no, my question was, would that be part of the paperwork that would be turned into Kenny before, with the license?
She, no, she won't get the license, period.
Probably not, because.
If she gets the license, you can, you can actually know that everything, thing has been passed, like the fire marshal or.
It's the last visit of the season, the fire marshal comes out and sees that everything's up to code, also, those are things like, you know, like the electric and everything, like everything there.
Heating system.
Yeah, and that's all new, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, anywhere along the line, you know, the state has their, well, you, you have, I see a copy right there in front of you, the, um, the Bible on child care facilities, yeah. So are we where we want to be?
So is a motion to be made?
Not yet.
Okay, so I'll make motion to accept the application with the following conditions?
Approve.
With the application with the following conditions? Can I go over those again?
Just list the, list of conditions.
The signage, um, and I have referenced the details in the notes on all the types of signage, contact DOT at all costs, four children limit, fencing per state rules, hours of operation, six-thirty to five-thirty, Monday through Friday, provide a copy of the license from the state, and if the state refuses signage, get a letter from them.
Do we want to talk about the one in blue?
No, I think the four kids are gonna look at that.
So there's a motion on the board, or they're sending it to the state?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, guys. Thanks for everything.
We've been told we're most fun for it.
Right, I didn't.
Thank you, guys. I think it's just our charming personality.
The hair is just cranking a little bit.
It's just cranking.
You're lucky I have good imaging, at least today.
Somebody will get back to Bridget and the letter, no issues. Okay, now, Darlene Hamm, not you.
Different Hamm, not you.
They don't have their dress on today. It's not Thursday, not for me.
So, um, Darlene Hamm was the conditional use modification to her weddings in the barn there.
Table it.
I think we have to table it, cause she's not here.
We wouldn't be comfortable going through the conditions without the applicant. I don't think so.
Struggle?
I mean, it is, just, I'm just throwing it out there, it's just a modification, it's not a full conditional use, I feel like it's possible to do it, but if the board is not feeling up to it.
There were a lot of things.
I think you probably remember most of them, but, um, should we take a vote as to whether or not we address it tonight?
I think if the applicant's there, I wouldn't talk about the application, I mean, your only assumption is just, we're just gonna approve it with some conditions.
No, we could just start into the discussion, if we get to a roadblock, we just stop, but we could just also not get into it, I don't, I don't mind, I was, it's just a modification, I wasn't sure.
I would prefer to table it.
I, I would agree, table.
I, I think we should table it, too, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable talking about things that we might require them to do without them here to have that.
Right, we wouldn't be able to fully approve it anyway, so we, okay.
I have a list of six things, and there could be four of them done since the time we saw it, you know, things that they could have already done. We don't know, we don't know, so.
Right, very good.
Okay, so, we are on to new business, and we have Doobie, seventy-three Cackey Lane, map one hundred, lot zero five one, best practical location application to demo existing structure and build a new single-family dwelling within the thirty percent expansion allowance.
So they're showing the current house is four feet back from the water, we're looking at moving over number twenty. Off of Man Road. Yeah, it's hard to see that, the existing house is right there.
It's the chimney, you see, maybe?
Uh, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, how big is the lot?
So that's the back of the house there now, they're looking at bringing it back into this area here. That's the waterfront side, that's the four feet, it drops down, there's still a few more feet right in that area there, but the survey's for whatever picked it up as being right there, is the front setback, so, um, moving it back to twenty feet's actually gonna gain them a front yard, a waterfront yard anyways.
The walk in the street?
Uh, that lakeside, there's two, one in the water, that first one back, this is the one behind it, they'll.
Oh, wow.
Basically, remove this wall and move the house back into this area here.
All of those trees that were marked, the trees that would have to come down?
Correct.
The first big tree.
Yeah, the revegetation plant on the front.
Yeah.
This would be the area of the house, that's the house down there, this would be moving back into this area here.
Is this a fairly, is this fairly flat to that area, and then it drops down, or is it a?
Yeah, it's flat right here and then drops down then, with that first retaining wall, then the second, then the third.
Septic?
Across the street, new one proposed.
And so what's our limiting factor, moving them back, the road?
The road setback right here, yeah.
So we're maxing that out?
Yeah, so it'll be. The fifty foot from the road right here, there's a little bit of a space, but not that much.
And where's the septic on that, that first one?
Uh, it goes across the street.
Oh, it is across?
Yep, yep.
So they only went across the street?
Uh, it's getting merged together, and they're gonna acquire this piece right here.
Okay.
And so there's the, so the proposed leach field's going up into here.
Right now, okay.
So it'll be probably three hundred feet away, we pump from there, so there's the existing house, the existing garage, um.
Another garage across the road?
Yep.
Where's the hundred foot one go? Where's the hundred foot one go?
So that existing garage is about a hundred and twenty-three, hundred and twenty-four feet back.
So we can't get them behind the hundred?
No, not totally, because we got this road as a setback, yeah.
And we don't wanna put them across the street?
Correct.
About beginning twenty or twenty-four feet.
Exactly, yeah.
I don't think we should continue. I kind of like that the applicants were here for these, uh, these best practical locations too.
Do you have any pictures?
Those are the ones we scanned.
Yes.
The existing shows is four feet from the high water and the new will be twenty-eight.
One something.
They proposed eighteen feet back, when I went out to do the site work, we, I came up with twenty-eight. Let's see, use overhangs anything?
Okay, yes. I'd drive this front.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
What part of the water is that?
Uh, great east, that's great east.
Have none.
That fell off, that.
What?
That's a clip I fell off, I've been out there a dozen times and I do.
Wait, try to get a measurement from?
Uh, I'm blaming it on my cold, coldness.
Who's a wood head?
I reported it. But after my tick fight.
I can't, I, I can't imagine with that retaining wall behind the house like that, that that's very healthy for the house.
Well, but you.
In the wintertime.
Well, the house is gonna be gone, right?
Yeah, that's gonna be gone.
But I'm taking anything, right?
Well, it, it's in beautiful shape, cause it's gotta be fifty, sixty, seventy years old, and you know at that time, it wasn't done with a machine, so maybe you had a lost time of echo, um, so mostly that was all handwork.
Maybe we should, we could ask.
Beautiful wall.
Mr. Hamm, can I go around?
Beautiful wall.
It is, but, you know, it's just critter condos in my book. We have a wall like that, everyone has another. I mean, if you want a nature reserve.
I didn't even think of that.
Oh, yeah, that's why I think critter condo.
Talk about subdivision, that's. I wouldn't want that behind my house.
No, exactly, exactly. So, uh, I think it's all pretty much what we see, that's, that's my opinion. I don't think there's any reason for us to want the rest of that next, following Ken's footsteps, uh.
All the way off the wall.
Right.
Put it in the water, you know, get right to the water.
So you walk off the wall?
Exactly.
No, I was thinking, uh.
Do they have water access, so to speak, on their wall?
Yeah, is there a path or something, is there a stairway?
Off the retaining wall, there's a bolted three by three landing that goes down to a set of stairs down to where the dock would be, and it's so raw and all you can see is the pine needles and cobwebs holding it together.
Ooh.
So that, that's their water access.
What are they, are they planning anything?
To replace it.
To replace?
But it's not really an erosion issue, it's the staircase.
And it's a.
Straight down.
Retaining wall with a staircase.
Five, six, seven, eight feet of wall.
Okay, right, right.
The technology, I was gonna say that we're using today, uh, the Ken uses. Put stuff on the wall, you can see everything, uh, very clearly, uh, but more clearly than you would if you were not to put it to place.
Right.
I just wanted to say appreciate what Ken's doing, because it does save us a lot of.
And it's, it's Thursday night at time for something, most of these people are from away.
Yeah.
They'll say, um, actually this gentleman's on a planning board and his meetings are Thursday nights, and he is actually chairman, so they could be without a chairman, so I even know what that's like.
And we know what that's like.
So I understood that as well, so.
Since we brought that up and it is out of order a tiny bit, but I'm the chairman, I'm gonna say it anyway. I do appreciate all of you two weeks ago jumping in, I know it was a tough, um, meeting. I know there, it, it would, it turned, it could be unpleasant, and I just know, I'm very proud of all of you. Um, I'm happy to see no responses anywhere, and I think that would break down some of the effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, because up to a couple hours before the meeting, I was picking you up in Wells at the train station.
That's right.
Things changed, yes.
Things changed, and, yeah, okay. Didn't even get my money back for the train ticket.
I'll make a motion, we approve the best practical location for Seventy Three Kitty Lane. The new camp to be located twenty-eight feet from the high watermark.
No closer.
No closer.
If we can get back.
No closer than twenty-eight feet from the high watermark.
Yeah, cause if we can push it even thirty feet, we can do it.
Certainly.
A second? All in favor?
I do have a meeting first week of July with York County Water and Soil, they've got a new director out there, she's gonna come out, we're gonna get a meeting, try to get back with them doing some of our designs, uh, for the vegetation and things like that, and if it goes good, maybe I'll have her come to one of the meetings or. So, uh, we're also at a meeting with Mike Morris, who was the Shoreland Zoning Board data for the D E P, um, we are likely to talk with him possibly doing, coming and doing a best practical location Shoreland zoning meeting for us one night, and maybe inviting Chapley and splitting the cost with them.
Sounds very good. Are you looking at, um, July first?
My meeting with her is the second.
Okay.
So we don't have the first meeting until July, right?
We will not have the July fourth meeting.
Yeah.
You don't wanna spend your time this day.
Uh, that, that's really great, Tim, I think that's a good idea, I will, I'll be here. We have still new business, uh. The, uh, Shaunis, Shaunis, sixteen thirteen H Road, map one twenty lot zero one. Again, B P L A, uh, demos, uh, the existing structure, rebuild a new single family dwelling within thirty percent.
I'll wait for the telephone, but this is H Road here, this is Great East Lake, Third Basin, um, the camp's down there, they wanna relocate it back, um, we'll push them to no closer than fifty feet from the center of the road to the rear of the camp.
Yeah, we can show them.
They wanted to move back ten feet, which would have brought them less than the fifty. Currently it's fifty-eight point eight from the center line of H Road to the camp, they wanted to come back ten feet, which would have been less than the setback, so seven feet, which would include their ease in all the hanks.
Go back an additional seven feet, continue?
Correct.
To help back in the water?
They have measurements up to the deck.
Is a camp, new camp gonna be configured in the same, uh, orientation with the same width?
It's going to have to be, cause the process would be, um, you relocate the existing camp, and if they can do additions and expansions, that's good, if they can't, well, that's what they get, um, no decks on the front, decks would have to be on the sides, so that's gonna shrink it down a little bit.
What is that on the front, a porch or a deck?
There is a porch on the front.
Yeah, that's gonna.
Is that gonna stay or not?
Porches can stay, yeah.
That's what I was wondering, if we could shrink the width a little bit, move them back more and still keep the fifty from the road. It looks very wide.
Yeah.
Overall.
That's cause it's a small lot, too.
True. But the camp looks big, I mean, what, the width?
Yeah.
What is it about?
I mean, what, what, are you calling this, that's what I.
Well, I'm looking at it like this picture right here.
Yeah, but I mean, this is what I call.
Right, that's the porch, so that's, that can, what?
That looks like, I mean, we're looking at a door and, and a double window there, and it looks pretty wide.
Right.
You know, and.
Where is it?
He's gonna learn.
He'll mess you up.
He's, he's got to learn, not these young kids, oh my god.
Until he takes the place of Jus' back in Spottin'.
Yeah, uh-huh.
It's twenty feet wide, the cabin.
It was on the, you know, on the car, also.
Yeah, twenty feet wide is the cabin.
Why?
Seven on the enclosed porch.
Plus seven, so twenty-seven feet.
Yeah.
By.
By length.
Yeah.
Twenty-six.
So it's wider than it is long?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it would go like that, okay. Right. And how about their sides, can they, can they make their side setbacks, are we, are we pushing the sides through the small?
Um, they meet their side setbacks currently, twenty-two point nine feet on the side.
So not much, not much room at all? Twenty-two feet, I mean, we can go to what, ten?
No, it's a pretty small lot, there's not a lot of options.
Yeah.
Um, twenty-seven, seven, fifty-four, thirty-five, thirty-five feet from the lake, turning twenty-seven into thirty-five.
So they'll nip with the deck on the side, can that one go past the house like it does?
Correct.
And we're gonna do some, obviously we're gonna do something with the front yard.
And the vegetation?
One picture they just raked it.
Okay.
It looks like they could use some vegetation.
Yeah, the, and this camp's looked like this forever, and the prime room never raked it up or anything, the pine needles stayed down pretty good, it's, it's in the pine, so heavy that it's so acidic the soil is.
But you'd never be able to, who's supposed to do anything?
They're gonna probably move a couple trees when they.
Oh, yeah, who cares about trees?
Relocate the camp?
Yeah.
How much soil they're gonna have to move to move that back?
I don't think there's much on the backside that they're relocating, cutting.
I think just that one tree.
Yeah, it looks small. The septic's going under the piney lawn.
So we'll just, we'll just ask for the, maybe we should get some bark mulch on there, that, that erosion control stump grannies or something.
Yeah, we'll do the same, you know, your county lawn soil, like going to water share or an independent, um.
Right.
Landscape designer will design a plan for the site.
Right.
Isn't that one photo, should the driveway go all the way down to the water?
I don't think there's to the water, there might have been a little access on the side or something like that.
Okay, what did that just say?
Right there.
Inside there.
Right there, I mean.
So we're establishing that, even just the erosion control miles and something.
Yeah.
Um, shrubbery or something like that would be one of those.
Definitely like to see something on there, and that, we usually ask for that anyways, huh?
That's, that's kinda.
It's boilerplate, but some, some sites ask for more than others.
Right, no, some are.
Changing.
Technique.
Twenty-seven to thirty-five.
Yeah.
You've been out there three, four times?
Yeah, I think so, it looks like needs to move stuff by. No one's interested in shrinking the width of the camp in the new, new situation, it's an area.
They have to start going smaller flies, it's in the kitchen.
Not supposed to ask how many people live there, right?
That's right. Come on. New, uh, income?
Moving it, moving it small.
They're calling a new structure a single family dwelling.
Yeah, we automatically, automatically.
That's what, yeah.
And the septic dictates how many bedrooms will be.
Right.
The septic says. Septic says three bedrooms.
Yeah, I mean, how does that work? If they move this back, say seven feet, right?
Yeah.
If it's a, uh, cement foundation underneath everything, would they, do they have to put new?
New foundations?
They're getting it holding foundation, isn't that?
Yeah, this is going in the dumpster and a new one's being built. Sometimes if they're going to save the foundation, that would be a criteria to leave it in the same spot, um, we, I've been burnt over that, that they're going to reuse the foundation and then they dump so much money into it that, should have just ripped it down to begin with anyway, so we look for structural engineer reports now for that, they're gonna keep it where it is, but.
Why so valid on this?
Usually, um, the process would be similar to the last one, if they were ripping the house down, they'd build a road down to gain access at the water, replace the retaining walls, put the well in, and then work your way out, put the foundation in, build a new house, then do the septic.
Okay.
So this one here would be down on the lakeside.
Yeah.
So, did you, what was that final number, high watermark?
Thirty-five.
Is there any? Effect, Ken, on the runoff? Did it turn your roof the other way?
We require a, throughout stormwater permitting process, um, a couple of ways to mitigate the stormwater, one would be drip line trenches, two feet wide, crushed stone, foot thick, and, and as the water comes off, it goes straight into the ground, or gutters and a cistern, some sort of downspouts and things, I hate the gutters just because, especially under the pine trees.
They don't work.
Yeah, so just do the drip line trenches, tie it into your foundation drains, uh, the limited impact development technology now is get the water into the ground as quick as you can, versus before, we used to go from a twelve inch pipe to a two foot pipe to a three foot, now, and it took forever for all the developers to agree that we don't need end pipes, just get it in the ground as quick and quick and as fast as we can, with absorbent stuff like the rain gardens and vegetation, um, now they understand that it's cheaper and faster better, so the developers are even pushing it now as well, too. But it's maintenance sometimes, who's maintaining this stuff?
So it's gonna remain a single story dwelling?
It'll have walkout foundation then.
Right, right, but they're not gonna turn it down.
They'll be within a hundred feet of the water, so they get that plus thirty percent, the deck was used as their thirty percent ten years ago or so, so, um, basically they get that and the foundation underneath it.
Oh, they already did their thirty percent?
Yeah, that deck is their thirty percent.
Well, what are we supposed to do then, what do you think?
So when it goes into a dumpster, we look at what was there in nineteen eighty-nine? So when it goes into a dumpster, we look at what was there in 1989, we look at the assessing pass from 1989.
Oh, you give the difference?
And we start, we go back to 1989, quite often, we'll look at all types of things, and none of it had permitting on it.
Yeah.
So you don't get 30% of all your violations, you get 30% of what was there in 1989.
Okay, I see, okay.
And that deck was used for it, so they could either put a deck back on and have the floor space, or make the house a little bigger.
It'd probably be a nice fireplace that goes down. On the inside, it says, neither side.
It looks pretty big.
It does look big. Keep the whole box placed. Have we any more questions on this one? Anybody?
I mean, I'd like to encourage making the thing a little bit taller or narrower to get us away from the lake, but if I don't see anyone else agreeing, I'd, I could, it looks pretty good.
Changing 27 to 35.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Okay.
I don't hope that it really can take that, right?
Yeah, there's not a lot going on in this one.
We'd be pushing the envelope. Yeah, almost there, a couple of old people.
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
We can't make assumptions.
Right, okay, I'll make a motion that we accept best practical location for 1613 H Road. Thirty percent expansion to be located no closer than 35 feet to the high watermark.
Second, second, all in favor? Very good. Okay, there is no other business coming for the board. Reminder that there are no workshops this month, I will let you know very quickly about July. And I'd like a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? We're done.